It's beautiful, it's beautiful. I just want to go. Um. I'm beginning to think that for five minutes long.
Maybe on my pocket's twenty-two, so I would say maximum another two minutes. Yeah, I would have.
Okay.
It's such a beautiful day and there is so much, I mean, to get people to go down. It's a disadvantage of doing conferences in the ground.
Yeah, it is really. Yeah, and that was really our most famous call and our last job. Yeah, this is a very weird time. The program was constrained by the different types of times. So, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Anna Mottinho. I'm a research manager in the Lisbon School of Economics and Management, University of Lisbon, so be very welcome to Lisbon. It's a lovely day. Hope you enjoy it, although it's a bit chilly. And we're here gathering for the session two on this special workgroup on social sciences humanities in EU research. We'll have two colleagues of ours presenting two very important reports and one discussant. So we're having Catherine Mass from the League of European Research Universities presenting the November report on interdisciplinarity in the 21st century on research-intensive universities. Catherine, she's responsible for policy development across all areas of the LIRU's research and higher education-related activities. She has a previous background in linguistics, so it's very interesting to see where do we all come from? And Catherine comes from the linguistics and foreign language pedagogy, which she actually pursued as a research in the United States of America. And so Catherine will be presenting us the LIRU report. After Catherine, we'll have Philippe, and now it will be very difficult to say this, Krautren? Krautren? Philippe actually is French and comes from DG Research. Philippe has a background in political science, so he's a PhD in political science from Sciences Pooh. He also worked on public sector innovation in Maastricht. And he arrived at the Commission at DG Sanco, as I understand, to start with, and then went into DG Research. And at the moment Philippe is the head of unit and senior expert in social sciences and humanities in unit B six, which deals with open and inclusive societies, where he supervises the integration of SSNH in Horizon 2020. And Philippe will be presenting us this working report from DG Research on the integration of social sciences and humanities in Horizon 2020. It is a very thorough report. I was very impressed with the amount of data which is in there, which is a great starting point for discussion. So, and we'll have Doris Alexander from Trinity College Dublin coming as a discussant for this. Doris has a background in mathematics and computer science. She's a very experienced research manager, as you can see from her resume, which is quite impressive, I must say. And so Doris is definitely an insider in European research policy matters and will definitely be able to discuss this very important matter. So the way it's supposed to go is twenty minutes for your presentations, ten minutes Q&amp;A, and then we'll switch. Okay? So, thank you, Catherine. The floor is yours.
Will you give me a five-minute warning?
I will give you a five-minute warning, yes.
Because we have to get through these sixty-six recommendations, of course.
But everybody has read the report, of course.
Oh, I can go and sit down then. Good afternoon, everybody. I hope that your lunch was as enjoyable as mine was. It's still sitting a little bit on my stomach, I'm afraid, but I have the advantage that I have to speak now, so I don't have the option of falling asleep. So, but I do hope that what I'm going to tell you is not going to put you to sleep. I will talk a little bit about this paper that we just put out, which is called Interdisciplinarity and the 21st Century Research Intensive University. Let me, before I go into that, tell you a little bit about what LIRU is and what we do, that may understand why this paper is there. LIRU is a network of now twenty-three research-intensive universities in twelve countries in Europe. We have existed since 2012. We started out with twelve universities. We've had three expansions now. And our role is really to stand up and be there as a voice for research-intensive universities and to stand up for the importance of the research that is done, frontier research, basic research, all kinds of research that is done at universities, especially in Brussels at the European institutions and all the, let's say, EU-related and research and higher education policy-related organizations that are in Brussels. So our main aim is to influence research and higher education policy in Europe. We focus on research as a small group of research-led universities, but of course it's intimately tied to our higher education agenda as well. We are a very small group that has its reasons. I'm not going to go into it now. Come and ask me later if you want to, but we hope that what we do, what we say, and how we act in Brussels has actually relevance for a much broader group of universities, not all universities, obviously, and higher education institutions in general in Europe, but a much more broader group than the twenty-three that we actively represent. I say twenty-three because we have added two members as of first of January this year, and that is the reason they are there at the bottom of the list, the University of Copenhagen and Trinity College Dublin. It's for no other reason than that that slide did not get updated in time. So please, Doris, you will forgive me. I see it's gonna cost me. Let me skip this slide because it says, what we do, education research, but with a focus on research and how we work by putting out papers, by having discussions in Brussels with all kinds of actors. Also, our groups come together as a way of fostering exchange of views and of information, of good practice and so on, and it all feeds into each other. The one influences the other activity and the second one the first. Nope, that's the wrong way. So, one in ways, we have several, we have actually, I think about fifteen groups that are active at the level of rectors, vice-rectors, directors, managers, all kinds of people in the universities that work on various topics and issues and questions. They come together regularly and either they volunteer or we ask them to work on certain topics, and that leads to papers that we then use in Brussels to influence the policymaking. So here you see a number of papers that we've produced recently. For instance, you might be interested in the one that was in Natural Sciences in Horizon 2020, which was published last summer, because it talks about the importance of collaborative research and discovery collaborative research, although it was written by the group of natural science, I think it has implications for a much broader group, and I'll come back to the technology readiness levels that are mentioned in that paper in a little bit. We also did one recently on citizen science, which is actually all about that bigger stakeholder and community engagement that Rosario was talking about this morning. Of course, Horizon 2020, the funding program is, and what will be the next one, FP9, is a big agenda item for us. We just put out a paper on the interim evaluation exercise that is being conducted by the European Commission at the moment, and we are gearing up for putting in our paper on the next framework program that will be ready, hopefully, sometime in March of this year. In a few weeks, beginning of February, we'll have a paper on education. As I said, it's not, hasn't been really our main focus of our activities, but we felt the need to talk about education and also education, the connection with research. It talks about undergraduate research opportunities, for instance, and things like that. That paper will be launched in Brussels on the second of February. We do this with all our papers, and so the paper that I'm going to talk about today was also launched in Brussels in November with a launch event where we invite all the stakeholders and we have a panel, we have a discussion of the paper and so on. We had that very good event in November, late last year. And then finally, we're hoping to publish a paper on impact. I mention it because I thought it would come up in this conference and it already has. So of course, it's a big, big issue. This is about impact. I'll just give you already a warning what it's not. It's not about impact in Horizon 2020. It really says about how we should move beyond from measuring narrow economic benefit to broader societal impact and how universities think about that. It's not an advice paper with specific recommendations. We also are very active in terms of press releases that are sort of policy briefs also about our activities. So now this paper, you may ask yourself, why does LIRU bother to write a paper like this? Because there's no lack of discussion and other fora in which to discuss this issue. It came up actually as a discussion, a spontaneous discussion among our rectors, the twenty-three heads of the institutions, and turned out that there are challenges, things that they're all dealing with, and they wanted to talk about this in LIRU. So eventually, we found some people willing to write the paper on it, and it generated a lot of discussion back and forth. In the end, it was sort of the vice-rectors for research who drove the paper, but we got comments from all over the university, from all, all kinds of people, and it turned out to be a very hotly debated issue at the universities. Of course, this is because universities who want to stay at the top of their game look for talent, the best staff, the best researchers, the best students, and it turns out to, to do that, you really need to have thought clearly about how you're going to deal with interdisciplinarity. It just, we went through so many iterations of this paper. It just shows how important and what a burning issue this is. I think there have been, there were hundreds and hundreds of comments on the various versions of this paper that we went through, just to show you how strongly people feel about this. So what in the paper, we talk about how do LIRU universities look upon interdisciplinarity? What is their vision? What are the challenges? How do universities turn them into opportunities? What do they do? What kind of strategies do they have? What kind of initiatives do they take? And after all this discussion among ourselves, what have you learned? And we did come up with sixty-six recommendations. And just to satisfy Doris, I will go through every single one of them.
Twice.
Twice, if necessary. No, I'm sorry, that's sort of an inside joke between us. I will not go and read the paper. Sorry, Doris. So first of all, the term interdisciplinarity, the way we use it in this paper is both as the specific form of collaboration as well as a broad umbrella term for designating collaboration between disciplines, but it's of course the latter that is the focus of this paper. The vision of LIRU universities is to support disciplinarity and interdisciplinarity as equally important, to solve scientific issues, problems, questions, and to address unprecedented challenges faced by human societies. So what we'd like to talk about is this sort of virtuous circle and how do you trigger that between disciplinarity and interdisciplinarity, as it's key for research-intensive universities to allow them to produce knowledge for societal benefit. Interdisciplinarity then is the key to make the university be more than the sum of its parts. Doing that actually requires quite a lot of investment and commitment at the university as a system, which is, universities are built along disciplinary lines. And it was very clear from our discussions that most, if not all, people felt that disciplines should remain a central element of the academic system, because they have an unrivaled power, if you want, to structure and to understand the world. Because knowledge is essential, because knowledge produced by the disciplines needs to be tensioned against each other, interdisciplinarity, we don't see it as against the disciplines, but as a driver of progress in the progression of the disciplines. Sorry, I'm just, have the remnants of a cold. I will have to cough some time. But at the same time, disciplinary knowledge is also constitutive of the interdisciplinary research process. So without sharp disciplinary knowledge, it wouldn't be possible to conduct interdisciplinary research in the first place. This is all probably very common sense and known to you, but for us, it was quite important to sort of get everybody to agree to that view of disciplinarity and interdisciplinarity. So in this virtual circle between disciplinary and interdisciplinary research, we have the potential to enhance the creation of knowledge. This applies both to bottom-up interdisciplinary research, which results from the need of the disciplines, and corresponds to the academically oriented basic research, and on the other hand, a top-down interdisciplinary research, the aim of which is to better understand pressing societal issues. So what has, I hope this is more or less readable to you. What has been named academically oriented basic research, I think by Catherine Lyle and others, aims to generate knowledge for its own sake, whereas problem-based applied research aims to address questions of societal relevance. If I have time, I won't have time in the talk, but perhaps in the discussion, I wouldn't mind coming back to this sort of distinction between basic and applied and, you know, what is discovery and so on, and what is societal-driven or knowledge-driven research versus problem-driven research and so on. It's not an easy one and what the balance should be between the two, anyway. That's perhaps something for later. But grounded in the commitment to strong discovery academically oriented research, LIRU sees the role of interdisciplinary research as one to help self-questions within a specific discipline faced with challenges that cannot address on its own. So the primary driver of interdisciplinary collaboration in academically oriented research are the needs of the discipline. It's a bottom-up process. It's a long-term process, and you can see some of those things aligned in the left-hand column there, and it drives innovation by creating new avenues for fundamental research. Researchers belong to a disciplinary community in this type of research and participate in interdisciplinary projects for a longer or short time, whatever, before they return to their disciplines, or also even still while working within their disciplines. When the interdisciplinary research leads to major breakthroughs or discoveries, the emergence of these new spaces of knowledge can also result in new areas of specialization, and they may become new disciplines within their own journals, their own societies, their own programs, and so on. On the other hand, top-down interdisciplinarity, so the problem-faced research, we view this as somewhat different. Contemporary important fields such as global health, environmental sciences are integrative by nature, but rather than developing as fully fledged new disciplines, they are crossroads for researchers from the natural sciences, social sciences and humanities. So researchers there are parts of informal networks, and for the most important challenges, they may be hosted in interfaculty centers and so on. They are typically places of knowledge translation, which focus on problems of technical, social and policy relevance and so on. Let me go on a little bit. We also in the paper, five minutes, yes, sixty-six recommendations to go. We go into the paper a little bit about different profiles of researchers that you can think about in being active in these various modes of doing research, but no time for that. You can, of course, go and read the paper. Now, what should universities be doing? What are they doing? What can they be doing? We structured the paper around three areas of action, if you want, three targets for action. The first one is university governance of interdisciplinarity. Basically, what we say there is that universities should have, should develop, should maintain and refresh an integrated, multi-pronged strategy to overcome barriers and obstacles, which we do see, which we do recognize and exist, and create an enabling environment for interdisciplinary research to take place. Of course, that takes time, thought, resources and a strong commitment from the leadership. And we can talk later also, I'm not going to have talk time right now, about that sort of interaction between what comes from the top as a commitment and what lives at the bottom from the, from researchers and centers and departments and so on, and how you make that gel, how you make that interact, because that's where a lot of the rub, of course, is. A second target is about evaluating and funding research. It's of course self-evident that you need to give support to this, money, financial and other support. And a third area of action is in the area of publication and valorization of interdisciplinary research, which of course is also about impact, so, and, well, I'm not going to go into impact. If you look at our recommendations on the first target, they center around five actions, if you want. It's about establishing interdisciplinarity as a core business of the university, about identifying priority areas, about preparing the terrain in education, creating the next generation of researchers and promoting the culture of interdisciplinarity at the, within the institution. The second target is about improving funding for interdisciplinarity research, how you look at evaluation, both before, ex ante and after, ex post, and some attention to panels and panel selection and what happens there. Third target, finally, as I said, publication, valorization of research. So I don't really have time to go into all these recommendations, I'm sorry, but I would like to say just a couple, stress a couple of things that have sort of stuck in my mind about discussions that we have. The second one there is an interesting, perhaps for you to think about also. Is it helpful that there is a vice-rector charged specifically with interdisciplinarity? Many of our universities do not seem to think that that is the best way to go. They see this as a charge of the vice-rector for research or education. There you have a difficulty already, because usually, most universities, those are two different people, and it creates, I know that some universities, I think Duke University in the States was mentioned as one that has a vice-rector specifically for interdisciplinarity. Anyway, I, let me go on to the next one. Supporting some areas. Let me go on to the next one. I mean, I think some of these will be sort of be transparent, be flexible, be sure that you have an adequate management and a staff that can help with those priorities and key areas and so on. So I'd like to dwell on this one because I think education is very much related to the interdisciplinary agenda, and it starts at the bachelor's level. Make sure that you look at what the opportunities are for interdisciplinary education. Make sure that you have a coherent program, but also flexible. Try to give students choices of where they're going to go. Too much still, we still tell our students, this is the program, that's what you have to do. We don't give them enough choices for making up their own minds about what is a good interdisciplinary or not. They may not think of it in terms of interdisciplinary, but in their heads, in the world that they live in, which is the world outside there, it is all connected. Universities sometimes still have to get around to thinking in that way as well. They do think that way. It's a question of how do you organize the university with its structures, with its silos, you know, which we're trying to break through? How do you make it work? And start that early in education. It's not something that you have to wait until it's an undergrad, it's a research, masters and so on. It has to. At the doctoral level, it's also very important. We, in LIRU, we have published several papers on doctoral education. From the start, we've always said there are three I's that are important in doctoral education. It's international, it's interdisciplinary and it's intersectoral. That doesn't mean that every single doctoral project has to have all those three characteristics as an intrinsic feature of its project, but usually the links to all of them are there in many cases, and that's something that really needs more attention as well. We have actually in LIRU also a doctoral summer school, where we try to bring people from all kinds of different backgrounds together on certain issues that are important to them. And I could very well see that a summer school on interdisciplinarity would be quite interesting to doctoral students and, anyway. So, and at the instructor's side, you know, of course, that we need to do things about, that the deterrence, the obstacles that exist about how you get teachers to invest their time needed for, for doing interdisciplinary teaching or research, the hiring problems that you have, and then all of the rest in terms of the careers, how do you support careers in terms of hiring and promotion that are not blind to the challenges of interdisciplinarity? It's true that the current system is kind of hindering the promotion of academics who may have double duties in various areas. There's also an interesting point in the paper on women. Women who, there are some researchers suggesting that women are more into interdisciplinary research or careers, and that therefore, as women, they already face difficulties in getting promoted, that this is kind of a double whammy, if you want, and how do you get around that? Not to talk about other whammies, I think there's lots of probably other whammies. Anyway, how do we promote a culture of interdisciplinarity and continually improve the system? It's not something like, oh, we have a strategy now. Oh, we've implemented it, it's done. No, you have to look at it again. It needs to be refreshed. I didn't get to talk about evaluation, but that's okay. I think we will pick that up again after Philippe's talks because a lot of this is directed at funding organizations, although the recommendations here, you can clearly also translate them in internally funded university research, of course. And we all know that we need to do things about journals that need to be better able to judge interdisciplinary research. So it's of interdisciplinarity, this is my last, my last slide, a vital complement to the disciplines, it's to mutual, there's a lot that can be done, there's a lot that is being done. In the paper, there is quite a few examples also of structures, examples, projects, centers for interdisciplinarity that we have found in our universities. Why? Their major benefits for universities, to strengthen their position in research and teaching, to increase their impact and to achieve societal gains and the social responsibility which they have to take on. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Thank you very much, first of all, for the invitation. Thank you to Olivia. You come for a kiss?
I'm coming, but not, well, also.
And first, first of all, I would like to thank, to thank her because of the name of her, of her course action, you know, she dared to invite somebody with an unpronounceable name, which, which is already, I think, a good indication of why I'm here. Now, some people know a bit what I'm going to talk about, but I would like just...
to judge interdisciplinary research. So it's of interdisciplinarity, this is my last, my my last slide, a vital complement to the disciplines, it's to mutual, there's a lot that can be done, there's a lot that is being done. In the paper, there is quite a few examples also of structures, examples, projects, centers for interdisciplinarity that we have found in our universities. Why, there are major benefits for universities, to strengthen their position in research and teaching, to increase their impact and to assign, achieve societal gains and the social responsibility which they have to take on. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Thank you very much, first of all, for the invitation, thank you to Olivia.
I'm coming, but not, well, also.
And first, first of all, I would like to thank, to thank her because of the name of her, of her cost action, you know, she dared to invite somebody with an unpronounceable name, which which is already, I think, a good indication of why I'm here. Now, some people know a bit what I'm going to talk about, but I would like just to be precise about a couple of things right at the outset. First of all, I'm going to present a bit what the commission is doing in terms of, let's say, what we called SSH integration, or let's call it interdisciplinarity as a shorthand, but I will speak in two ways. First of all, I'm going to speak about what we call collaborative research. And if you were here and you heard Peter Fish this morning, so we're talking about, you know, this part of the research program where we put actually people, institutions, research centers, universities from different countries to work together. So I'm not going to speak about the ERC that was presented this morning, I'm going to present about this, let's say, what we call collaborative research. That is one thing. The other thing which is important for you is that I'm going to speak about interdisciplinarity in terms of interdisciplinary between social sciences and humanities on the one hand and other sciences on the other hand. So I'm not going to speak about interdisciplinarity within social sciences humanities or within, let's say, the STEM world in general. Last thing, I would like to speak about, let's say, problems, issues, rather than, you know, saying that everything is fine. So, first of all, I think Peter said very clearly this morning that, you know, between FP4 and FP7, you know, there was a European program in research in SSH at the collaborative level, so there was that. And then suddenly, there was a decision being made for Horizon 2020, that there shouldn't be any longer such a program in social sciences and humanities. And you can see there that, you know, FP7 was very clear, but you can see that in Horizon 2020, basically, social sciences and humanities has become, let's say, a cross-cutting issue, that's the language that we use, and therefore, we want SSH to be integrated across Horizon 2020. And I'm going to address in particular what we called pillar two, which is, you know, let's say, a more technological side, which is concerned with, let's say, the technological and research development for Europe. And then about pillar three, which is called the social challenges such as health, transport, energy and so on. And this is very important because a lot of people tell us, but you know, there is a social challenge, there is a program for social sciences and humanities, it's called Challenge Six, innovative, inclusive and reflective societies. No, this is not the case, because this program is also a program which is embedded and where you find other things. If you take that social challenge number six, for instance, which is worth on paper 1.3 billion euros for the whole period 2014, 2020, sorry, you can see that only forty percent is actually dedicated to SSH topics. The rest is ICT development, the rest can be international cooperation, the rest can be, let's say, innovation initiatives or some research on innovation policies, and it can be cost. For instance, cost is being for half its budget, budgeted by Challenge Six and therefore, you know, supports research like entropy and other research which is not SSH related. Okay? So only forty percent of this amount is actually. So you can see that the logics of SSH integration goes all over the place, including in places where you think it's only SSH. Now, why SSH integration in Horizon 2020? It's not a new idea, you know, it's not a new idea. You look at the rationale here, it's very traditional rationale, you know, which is given to you, but you can also see that it's not new. Actually, digging up in my archives, I found this, you know, URAV report of 2004, which is not the only one, not, you know, the best one maybe, but, you know, and that is what they say there in front of your, of your eyes. Classical things about, you know, major breakthroughs at the boundaries or intersections of disciplines. Whether that's true or not, I'm not going to discuss that, you know, because I don't know whether this was empirically based at the time when they say that. But you can see that they make a number of recommendations, you know, twelve years ago, which I think are still decent ones and that we can still, you know, trust that, you know, we 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 could see them as solid suggestions. Peter said this morning that under FP5 as well, you know, we had these key actions and we tried also to say that, well, let's try to find, you know, interdisciplinary solutions to problems. So there was some interdisciplinarity in the past, although, as he's also said very rightly, nobody ever took the pains to actually see how much, you know, there was, what it was, how much budget was going to end, what kind of interdisciplinarity there was and so on. But you can see that, you know, there was a lot of skepticism around the place, you know, as to what was done with that. And I've got these quotations there, you know, behind me, which shows that right at the outset, people were not convinced that, you know, this kind of ideas of promoting interdisciplinarity in order to address societal challenges at the time, back in ninety-four, ninety-eight, that that is what's working. So there was some, let's say, skepticism, if not disappointment. Now, I'm not going to turn to, let's say, the pros and cons of interdisciplinarity, I just want to come back to a number of arguments which came back at the beginning of Horizon 2020, when we actually addressed that. There was not so much talk, but I can remember a number of things and about the pros and cons of SSH integration. About, you know, the pros, obviously, the idea was to say that, you know, problems are societal and if they are societal, by definition, they mean that it means that you should bring a number of people from the SSH side to to have their say, all right? And see the examples there. Now, there was the ethical side as well, that sometimes, you know, it's good to bring ethics back into, you know, the place and, you know, there was, so there's errata, which we call responsible research and innovation, and the people from SSH can bring something more, you know, to, let's say, the practice of science when they address social challenges like GMOs and so on. And then the knowledge side, which is the classical one, which is explaining the rationale of Horizon 2020, which is that, you know, knowledge is better when it is shared, when it is, you know, advanced by different viewpoints and so on and so forth. But at the same time, some people were very skeptical about that. And a lot of people say, yeah, interdisciplinarity, maybe yes, but only by people who are excellent in their disciplines. Right, okay, how to square the the circle at LIRI? That's what would be the question. And therefore, the idea is that, okay, but then, you know, SSH becomes an add-on. Let's have something and then maybe the SSH people could do the business plan. Good. Ethical side, yeah, 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 good, SSH, yes, but, you know, our problem is really, you know, the social acceptance of technologies. The people of SSH are going to help us there, very good. Well, are the people of SSH ready to do that only? That's another question. And the social side, which I think has been explained very well by Catherine, which explains that, you know, in practice, if you do, if you look at the sociology of science, gives you plenty of examples of why it is difficult to cooperate. So very quickly, I would like to go through a number of the key conclusions that we have raised in two reports there. What we did is that we said, okay, let's see what we have done, contrary to what was done in the past, FP4, FP5, FP6 and so on, let's, let's see, you know, what kind of interdisciplinary we have got and how it works and what are some of the factual things behind that. So I'm just going to do into a number of facts that we discovered by, let's say, looking at interdisciplinarity as it is practiced under Horizon 2020. Now, first of all, what we decided to do is that, you know, we should tell people, you know, these are places where interdisciplinarity is welcome. Where we, so we didn't tell them, go and try to do interdisciplinarity. We tried to tell them, look, in this, for instance, health program, there's one topic, two, three, five topics where, you know, we we want to have interdisciplinarity and interdisciplinarity is good. And that's where, for instance, you can see that a percentage of these topics are what we called SSH flagged. So if you go to Challenge Six, you can see that not all of them are actually SSH flagged, you know, you can see only less than eighty percent of them. Now, if you go to space, still, there was a bit of SSH in space, five percent. And if you take, for instance, that's energy, for instance, energy, you could see that nearly fifty percent of the topics put in the work program had or or were open to SSH. So that's what this means. So you can see altogether, I think it was thirty-seven percent. So it means a third was open for or promoted for interdisciplinarity and two-thirds were not, right, were something else, either interdisciplinarity within some areas or whether disciplinary. Now, this figure, so it means that, you see, for instance, in 2015, we had SSH partners, I'm not going to come back on what SSH partner is, maybe during the questions, but what is interesting here is that, you know, for instance, you see that in blue, we have got the funny projects and the SSH flagged topics, and we have the project with at least one SSH partner. So take this one, Challenge Three, because Challenge Three has got a number of topics with SSH flag, but then you can see that here, there's a deficit. Although we said we would like SSH, these are the number of topics where there is no SSH partner, where it means basically that interdisciplinarity has failed. So this is one issue, that is one problem that, you know, we have to tackle. Here is, you know, very quickly, you know, the budget going to SSH partners in 2015, so you can see obviously that in Challenge Six, a lot of money go there, but you can see also that, for instance, relating this pillar two, in what we call in the ICT part of late, you get also substantial money going to SSH partners. So this gives you a bit of a of a view of, you know, where we go. Let me run through a number of very, you know, some results which could be of interest to you. If you looked at the SSH partners by country 2015, obviously, you can recognize here something which is familiar, but if you take the first six countries there, they managed to get, you know, sort of, you know, sixty-six percent more or less, let's say, of the partners, concentrated in six countries, which means again, which Peter said, what about Central and Eastern Europe partners, what about Southern partners? Our friends at Portugal, this is here, not faring that well, you know? Greece, and then I could also mention other countries, obviously, but you can reference here. So this is an issue that obviously we have to address, and this is true not only in Challenge Six, but it's also true in other parts where the SSH partners play a role. What we also did is we tried to organize or to develop a composite indicator, taking several parts, like, for instance, share of SSH partners at least twenty percent, budget going to SSH at least twenty percent, person months by SSH partners at least twenty percent and contributions from at least two disciplines. Saying that, you know, if there is at least twenty percent of SSH presence in a project, it means that there is good evaluation, genuine efforts to try to integrate, right? Look at the results. The results say, well, forty percent good and fair for ninety percent, right? So let's say sixty percent is okay, all good, but then you get forty percent where actually SSH integration or interdisciplinarity is not good. So you can see that even though we define SSH topics where we call for inter, interdisciplinarity and so on, the actual result is that in forty percent of the top projects which are selected, the integration is either non-existent or weak. And that is obviously an issue that we have to tackle. If we show that, you know, program by program, you can see, you know, different achievements, very good in Challenge Six, very good in Challenge Seven, by the way, security, interesting, but sometimes very weak, for instance, in Challenge Five, energy. So, you see, we have got a number of issues to to tackle for the future. One last thing, which I would like to give about this report, is disciplines. We mean interdisciplinarity, but with whom? Who is there? Who is doing what? Which disciplines? And so we had a refined methodology this year where we looked very much more clearly at, you know, who is doing what? And you can see that, you know, when you speak about interdisciplinarity, you know, the leading disciplines are economics, political science with public administration, business and marketing, sociology as well, but bottom of the list here, you see, there's not a lot of activity, so there is no actually interdisciplinarity or very little with geography, demography, anthropology, education, psychology, humanities and the arts are doing four percent. So we mean that interdisciplinary, yes, sometimes it works, but with some disciplines and not with others. And that's an issue because we should be open to all disciplines. And if you see the, sorry, five minutes. And if you see the non-research activities also, we put that because we have got a number of people with an SSH background, their research programs, projects, we, who are not doing research, but are doing non-research. So we wanted to account for them as well, and that was an improvement in comparison to the previous reports. Now, what are we going to do in the future? First of all, there's the work programs sixteen and seventeen running on, and there again, we get more or less forty percent of the topics in across Horizon 2020 are flagged for SSH integration, therefore for interdisciplinarity. And there is the issue of now, what do we do for eighteen and so on? I'm skipping some of these best examples, sorry for that, but I go to the conclusions because I've got, you know, a little time left. First of all, it's clear that what we have done is that we have tried to improve the definition of the topics of the research. We try to avoid a situation where we say blah, 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 technology, an SSH, you know, dimension would be welcome. No, that is not very attractive. So we try to define the research topics in such a way that actually the call for genuine interdisciplinarity and where the viewpoint and the integration of social sciences and humanities will be taken serious. And that's a key issue for for us. The other thing that we do is that during the evaluation, we try to make sure that, you know, the SSH flagged projects or the interdisciplinary projects are going to be evaluated by also people with an SSH background. So if you go, for instance, you know, to transport or if you go to energy, we try to make sure that the people there will not only be people specialized in energy or in transport coming from a STEM background, but also there will be people from the social sciences and humanities, so that we balance the evaluations. And the last thing that we do is what I'm doing now, which is trying, let's say, to 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 organize the monitoring of that, and try to show to people what is being done, where the problems are and what we should be doing. The report I'm presenting to you today, I sent it to to the organizers, will, should be available actually on on Monday. We had our usual problems of finalizing that and it's not ready yet, but but it's it's nearly available. But beyond that, we see very clearly from the commission viewpoint that, you know, if we want to be really serious about SSH integration, we have actually to develop other tools. And that should be, in our view, also one of the, you know, important considerations for the development of FP9. And one important thing is that, first of all, we need to socialize interdisciplinarity. Yes, we we work within the commission services, try to improve the topics and that so that we have quality in the research topics. But we need to socialize that also at other levels, we need to see with the expert groups what they have to say and we have to see that more systematically. The program committee, also I see a colleague from the program committee from Portugal here, we also would like, you know, to integrate that in the dealings of the of the program committees in all domains of science. Downstream as well, you can't imagine how little we know about, you know, the actual practice of interdisciplinarity. We know too little. We don't go enough outside, we know anecdotal evidence, but it's far from being systematic enough. And our impression is that, you know, you cannot create love where there is no love, you know, and that in particular, you know, if there is no intention, if there is no appetite for getting into interdisciplinarity, we are not going to create this top-down. Okay? So we need to know in practice what the practices of love are at a local level. And finally, there may be a number of the things that they can do in terms of science policy. One, for instance, maybe is, you know, taking my cue from what I've just said, is that maybe, you know, we should have open calls rather than trying to define, you know, precise topics in in transport, in health and so on. Let's open and see a bit of bottom of thing, you know, so that people who have already tried and started or developed things can actually improve and then progressively we build up on that. Another thing which is very important is that so far, our practice has been that, you know, people from, you know, the other challenges from the pillar two of Horizon 2020 within the commission, come to see me and say, okay, I've got this very fine, you know, topic and I need to SSize it, I need to put the SSH flavor on it. To which I say, well, you know, it's not exactly, you know, know, it's not exactly, you know, what we thought we should be doing, but that is what happens in practice. So again, we need to go a step back, and rather than having me, you know, putting the SSH pepper on, you know, the main dish, I should rather say, okay, let's go to the kitchen together, and let's try to develop the recipe together. And finally, what the EU people said at the beginning of my talk, I think, is still important, maybe it's not the only thing, but still, we still have, you know, to map the practices, as I say, remove the barriers as much as we can, you know, improve the training, and this is something also that at European level, you know, we can do and maybe we should be doing much more evidently. Thanks, sorry for that.
Thank you very much, thank you. So what I'm going to do, hopefully briefly, is to run through some of the points that I kind of stood out for me across the two presentations, and very much maybe to provide questions rather than answers, but maybe to pose some questions which hopefully most of you will move into the World Cafe in the next section, and that we can then utilize that to think about some of the things that have happened during the day and to come up with some good recommendations. Okay, so I'm from Trinity College in Dublin. We just joined LIRU as of the first of January, so that paper that you saw presented today would not have been done, if you like, with our involvement, so I did pick out a few points and see how it matched in actually with what we were doing. Our interest in interdisciplinarity is that forms part of our strategy, which I will be showing you in a few moments, and also because we have a very ambitious target of drawdown from Horizon 2020. So we want to draw down one hundred and fifty-four million, which is about a doubling from FP7, as against, as you know, a halving of the success rates. At the moment, we're nineteenth out of one thousand three hundred educational institutions, and we're twenty-ninth out of all funding bodies who've drawn down funding out of Horizon 2020. So what I wanted to say was, very often we tend, I think, to mix up terminology. So in the framework program, you listen to SSH flagged topics, but if you actually look at the evaluation criteria, it talks about interdisciplinary research, and we know that interdisciplinary research doesn't necessarily mean SSH integration, it could be interdisciplinary research within the STEM area. So for me, there's a slight mixing of terminology as well. The LIRU document for me points out that whilst we very much look to Horizon 2020 as they should be setting the standard for us, it should be the gold standard, in fact, there are three very important stakeholders. So there's the university governance, there is, of course, funders, which include Horizon 2020, but also national funders, and then there is the publication and valorization piece, and each of those have to provide incentives and rewards, I think, to move forward. One of the questions I would ask is that, given that interdisciplinarity doesn't necessarily mean SSH integration, how does those sixty-six recommendations map into if we were looking for SSH integration? And in particular, are there additional things that SSH integration needs because of what it is a specialty within interdisciplinary research? And those are questions that perhaps we can talk about at the World Cafe. The benefit of interdisciplinary research, we've heard mentioned again and again, do people actually understand the benefit of SSH integration? You in that community do, but what about the general public? Do they understand that? So within Ireland, we have a thing called the Irish Research Council, they would be the primary funders of SSH, and they carried out a survey, now it wasn't quite a short survey, not going to go into detail on it, but simply to say that a lot of the points that were mentioned by researchers as being obstacles for the integration, successful integration of arts, humanities and social sciences in Horizon 2020, match actually very well with the things that we've heard today. So I think the obstacles, the things we've been talking about today, are certainly prevalent across communities and are things we need to try to think, how can we move past them? So the first target in the LIRU document was around university governance. Now, the first presentation this morning, Emmanuel said, I'm probably quoting this incorrectly, that researchers or scholars tend to be a little bit ambivalent about power. Well, one of the things we need to do is to be a little bit less ambivalent. You need to go out and sell yourself. University governments, I forever am hearing things like the university, the college. If you work in a university or a college, you are part of the university and college, so don't refer to it as something separate to yourself. You have to be willing to drive that change. You can't be waiting for other people to do it. You have to be willing to drive out policy, you have to be willing to get onto committees that can help drive that policy change. So for me, the important part of the first target is university governance and you. What is you? It is the leadership in the university, it is the researchers, and it is the administration, and everyone has a part to play in that regard. You need to be talking to your national funding agencies, you need to be storytelling the success stories and the benefits that SSH integration can bring, it's not going to happen without you. So if university governance for interdisciplinary research, as per the LIRU recommendation, were supported and fostered, would that automatically foster SSH integration, or are there other things that need to be done? Which of the recommendations are the most important within this area? So within my own university, similar probably to many of yours, we have this discipline-based approach, so we have three faculties, twenty-four schools, but we also have a strategy that actually calls out interdisciplinarity. So it is about the development of new interdisciplinary fields, undertaking research on the frontiers of disciplines, activating talents, building partnerships, research for impact, and renewing the Trinity education, all around that. Ideally, you need to be getting it into your university strategy in order to drive change. We also have research themes. So these research themes are bottom up, we have champions, we have people who want to work with other people in the university, we've had town hall meetings to bring together people around these themes, they've undergone international peer review, and the idea is we will see an emergent list of those that may become world reference points, those that are maybe won't, but will be at a different stage, and then there is the possibility of resourcing those at different levels. So within the university governance piece, we saw education called out. Now, within our university system, there's nineteen million students across Europe, and I think it's very important to ensure as far as is possible that we're fostering a problem-solving approach, that the students do have exposure to interdisciplinary themes and exposure to concepts, and certainly within my university, quite a lot of research funding is used to fund doctoral students within interdisciplinary projects, and I think that allows that exposure. But I think also we may see a drive by students themselves to require exposure to interdisciplinary research. I think many universities are also trying to take on board the impact of employability skills, and what will that effect have? And I think we also need to consider that within, and it was mentioned this morning, there's only so much resourcing available to universities. Similar probably to most of you, the government funding to universities in Ireland has gone way down, so you have a set pot of money, you're trying to encourage disciplinary excellence and encourage interdisciplinarity. How can we balance the two? So within Trinity, we actually have a number of different things underway. The first one, the Trinity Education Project, is under development at the moment, and the idea is that if you're in a particular discipline, you can choose particular electives, so you could be somebody in computer science, and you might say, I'd like to choose the cancer elective, I'd like to choose international development, and you can go and have exposure to those disciplines, but also because you're going to be sitting in a community with students coming from right across the university, you're also being exposed in that regard. So that's something that we've underway at the moment. I'm not saying it's the gold standard, you may well have wonderful initiatives within your own university, and I would suggest you bring those ideas to the World Cafe, and we might think about those. The other thing is we have a system whereby we have students that come in from second level, that's called Bridge 21, and they're, we're trying to build a problem-solving skills. One of the things that has certainly we've seen within Europe and very much within Ireland is this focus on STEM, and right back to second level of education, the focus on STEM, the importance of STEM. What are we doing in relation to SSH appreciation at a second, a second level education? Are we just waiting for something to happen? We need to be bridging in that regard as well. The second one is about evaluation and funding interdisciplinary research, and here we've seen a very good example from Philippe being Horizon 2020. So the idea being that really to fund this area, we should have earmarked funds for interdisciplinary research, we should be looking at higher-risk interdisciplinary research, that's the kind of the bottom-up idea, we don't quite know what's going to lend itself to developing transdisciplinary funding opportunities, and we do need to establish criteria for both the ex ante and post ante that's given in the LIRU document. One of the things that I don't think has been mentioned too much so far is that interdisciplinary research can actually take a greater length of time than disciplinary research, and funders need to take this on board, and you need to be encouraging your funders at a national level to have an understanding of that. Coming from the statistics that Philippe showed, one of the things that occurred to me, and it's on the slide, is that, do you actually need a well-developed, mature system of disciplinary funding before you can engage in interdisciplinary research? And then the next is, do you need a well-developed national system of funding in interdisciplinary research before you can embark into Horizon 2020? And certainly, again, from the Irish perspective is, when we were talking to social science and humanities PIs, they were saying, and if you look at the chart that Philippe put up, we haven't done too well, they would say that actually, because there hasn't been a lot of funding at national level, they really don't feel they have the confidence to go at the European level, particularly to coordinate, because they don't have that project in financial management, for example, expertise. So I would just query whether or not you have to have a mature, well, a system in place before you can embark more successfully at the international level. So this is the report that Philippe put up, and I've just put the 2004 stats beside the 2005. One of the things is, as Philippe has said, really, there's a small number of countries dominating, and did dominate in 2014, dominated again in 2015, and particularly when it comes also to coordination. In fact, when it comes to coordinating, you have, we have only, I think it's down here, let me see, we've only four of the EU thirteen represented in the top twenty countries, and I don't think we have any coordinating at all. So as you know, in Horizon 2020, there's a big focus on this widening and twinning with the EU thirteen, but there seems to be an apparent problem, particularly in the social sciences and humanities. The UK very much dominates, that leads to the question, what's going to happen after Brexit? If they're leaving Europe, they're bringing a huge level of expertise into the system, what do we do if they're not there? The other thing is, so we've seen uneven integration in terms of country participation, but also in terms of projects. So you could see that across the chart that Philippe put up, the different areas, the different societal challenges, it's made all the more worse if you actually exclude a societal challenge six, because obviously that's quite, taking quite a bit of the focus. And then right across the discipline areas as well, and again, as Philippe mentioned out, those areas include project management and communication, so again, if you take that nine percent out, you know, what are you left with? And I think from 2014 and 2015, primarily it's the same type of disciplines that are doing very well. So is there a case to be made that these other disciplines need to be selling themselves a little bit, need to be getting out there and talking to others? So for me, one thing, and I know it can't be done because it was very much a manual exercise, when you read this report, when, if you don't have access to it already, there is a huge amount of labor gone in putting that together. But one of the things when we say, we criticize, so there should be more projects funded that, you know, with SSH inclusion, how many were actually sent in? Because you can only choose from the pot that has been sent in, and how many of those were excellent? Now, I say that with the proviso that, you know, the definition of excellence perhaps isn't very conducive to SSH integration, but we do need to consider that as well. Also, who frames the topics for SSH flagging? You know, what disciplines are actually looking to see, oh, this, we should flag this? That's a question as well. Should we actually even have SSH flagged? What does that mean? Does that mean things that aren't SSH flagged? No, there's no, there's no point in going for those? So I think there's a bigger question to be had there, and what, if anything, should funders do to try to bring disciplines together? Is it their role to bring disciplines together? And I know that we have some great expertise in the room around the management of interdisciplinary research projects. So you can have a great project, maybe it's not really interdisciplinary, maybe it's multidisciplinary, with nobody talking really to anyone else outside of their own little work packages. So who's able to actually look at it from an interdisciplinary standpoint and say, yep, this is going to be successful, it's a great idea, it's a great team, and I believe the management structure will make it work? You know, there is a very low success rate in Horizon 2020 compared to FP7, and that there is a move towards more two-stage proposals to get over that. What you may not know, though, is in two-stage proposals, very often at the first stage, you may only have two evaluators in a collaborative project evaluating. How's that going to favor or disfavor SSH integration? So we would need to think, I think, moving into that, to have a better evaluation process at stage one of a stage two, if we're to go that route, and still try to encourage SSH integration. I think it is useful, and I know Intrepid have certainly done work around how interdisciplinary research is being funded across Europe, but it's always interesting to keep an eye on practice and policy in other jurisdictions, to see, are other people doing better, what other people trying out? Within Trinity, and this is one of the things I think we were talking about, you know, how do you sell yourself? Well, last November, there was a new center setup, Trinity Research in Social Sciences, and I went along to that, and two of the things that stood out to me was that they are seeking to highlight the contribution that they can bring to policy. They're not waiting to be asked, they are getting out there, there were politicians at the launch. They actually are coordinating a Horizon 2020 project in the energy area, which was one of those areas that has actually has a very low social science and humanities integration. And they're promoting collaboration, they're promoting themselves, if you want to work with somebody in social science, you contact them, and they will act as the interface for the university. So what I would say is, to what extent are you promoting yourselves as a community? To what extent are you waiting to be asked? And I think that we need to do more. So I think this is just coming back to pointing out a couple of things from the Horizon 2020 standpoint. The interim evaluation of Horizon 2020, the deadline was someday just gone, and many of you responded to that in order to try to influence the continuation of Horizon 2020 and FP9. Were you waiting for somebody else to do it on your part? How many of you have registered as an evaluator, so that you can actually understand the process, so that you can bring your own expertise into the area? What are you doing to influence the agenda of Horizon 2020 and FP9? Because FP9 is now underway in terms of its development. In terms of publication and valorization, I have to say this is not my area of expertise, so just hang in there, but what I would say is, talking to people who have been involved in interdisciplinary research, they would say that it's maybe not the problem so much about trying to find a high-impact journal, and in fact, there's a move away from high-impact journals to having high citation rates for a publication, but it's because the time involved in an interdisciplinary project can be longer than perhaps the funding that you got, so you're trying to do it faster, and therefore the impact may not be as great, and you're trying to publish perhaps at a point where it's not quite mature enough for publication. I think we do need more interdisciplinary themes in journals. You also need to check is your paper working for you. An example would be the connected car. About ten years ago, you would not get anything published on that in a transport journal, it would only be in IT. Now it's in economics, it's in transport, so there is a level of maturity associated with knowing where papers are being published and using that to work yourself. In terms of impact, now we've heard today that, in fact, you know, the general publications may not be suitable for social science and humanities, and we need to influence the impact agenda. We need to be looking at how the work of the social science and humanities community actually affects policy, for example, affects the social media. So we need to be looking at a set of metrics or impacts that goes beyond the very perhaps high, higher TRL level. What are we doing in that regard to influence that? Again, we've heard from speakers that the impact is something, heard from Peter as well, impact is something that's going to be very important in FP9, we need to be influencing it right now. So going into FP9, there was mentioned, I think, Peter, you mentioned that the idea perhaps of having, you know, a program or a focus, or I call it a flagship around SSH, is that something we would like to see driven out? LIRU, I know, mentions that in one of their previous papers, a concept of having an SSH flagship called Europe in the World. We know that the UN Sustainable Development Goals are very much going to influence FP9. You cannot even start to resolve some of those issues unless you have disciplines working together. How are we going to influence that? There is a concept at the moment of sister projects, it's very much in the IT area, where you have projects that are funded from the SSH area, and then projects that are funded from the more technological area, and then you cluster them and bring them together. And then you cluster them and bring them together. Is that something that's workable in a bigger format? And I don't have the answer, but as a community, you need to start to think about what is the appropriate model of trying to get more of your community involved in research?